Okay, let's get this show on the road. All right. Okay. Here. Welcome, everybody, to the City of Placerville City Council -- regular City Council meeting of October 24th, 2017. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
And Councilmember Wilkins will be noted as absent.
Okay, thank you. Announcements and presentations to the public. Let's start over here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Greetings, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. I wanted to let folks know that I had an occasion to attend the Camino Safety Project meeting this last week. And it's important to note that that's the project that's going to help reduce the left turns out of Camino that resulted in a lot of fatalities and a lot of accidents. It's been a project that has been years and decades in the making. And it's important for folks to know the EIR is now opened on that project, and they will be taking comments through November 9th. And if you'd like to make comments and review the project, you can go to, you know, .california, www.ca.gov -- backsplash -- backs? Backsplash. Where'd I get that? Backspace District 3 to find the project.
That would be nice.
Yeah. And what this project includes is a concrete median up the middle of Highway 50 from the Apple Cafe on up, and an overpass or an underpass. There's a couple of different final options that they're still weighing. A $50 million project that will -- construction will begin June of 2019 and will end December of 2021, so a couple-year project. Yeah. And the other announcement that I'd like to make is, you know, Marshall Hospital is such an important part of our community. And we are very pleased to hear that this year, for 2018, Marshall Hospital has received several health-grade awards. And this is a big deal. Health Grades is an organization that reviews hospitals throughout the United States. 4,500 healthcare facilities are reviewed, and this year Marshall has received five-star honors, which is as good as it gets, in treatment of appendectomy, pneumonia -- that's a 14th year in a row -- pulmonary embolism, the second year in a row, sepsis, the sixth year in a row, and stroke. And we've received numerous awards as an American stroke facility. In addition, we topped 10% of overall in pulmonary services and five-star awards for total knee replacements. So Marshall is consistently recognized as one of the top hospitals in the United States, and that is something, I think, to be very, very proud of in our little community.
Yes.
Kudos to Marshall's.
Agreed. Yes. I would like to add something about the Camino project. You know, Caltrans gets a bad rep sometimes for not being particularly sensitive and certainly not listening to people. And I think the work that they've done up there, working with the community, going through a number of iterations of different options and ways of dealing with this situation, has really been something. And they deserve some credit for doing that and listening to the community up there and coming up -- I don't know where they settled on the final project, but they were aligning very well with a lot of the community concerns and whatnot. And this is a big deal because essentially they'll be closing off the freeway to all left-hand turns all the way up past Carson Road, which means you'll have to go back uphill a little bit before you can go downhill. But anyway, it's -- I think it's worth noting that -- and the Transportation Commission and Eldorado County have all worked really hard. Supervisor Veer Camp has been very good about shepherding this last piece of the project through the planning and the environmental stage. So it's something we should all at least take notice of because Caltrans sometimes doesn't always get love from us, and sometimes they deserve it. So I would like to announce that we're going to have a fun-packed evening discussing water rates and sewer rates here on November 8th. That meeting will be here. It starts at 6:00 and is scheduled to go to 8:00. It's very important. It's part of a review of a lot of financial stuff and operational costs and whatnot, having to do with the operation of our sewage treatment plan and the sewer system, and then observing rates and then deciding what we want to do with our rates. And so that's an important thing. There will be the Halloween Parade on Main Street, on old historic part of Main Street, always a lot of fun between Sacramento and Bedford, I believe. And I think they close off the road at like 4:00 or something like that. I'm not exactly sure. Lots of little kids, all dressed up, lots of older kids dressed up, lots of fun. Let's see, is there anything else? No? Okay, go.
I don't have anything.
You sure?
I think so.
If you think of something.
I'll think of something, I'll tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have an exciting announcement from Goldbug Park. The Goldbug Park Development Committee and its associated volunteers have chosen to put on a two-day Halloween celebration this year. It is Thrills, Chills, and Tommyknockers, October 28th and 29th. On Saturday, 28th is the adult night, starts at 5:00 p.m. and goes till 10:00. Including a costume contest. It's a $10 admission charge to get in, and both mines will be open along with various other characters and lots of decorations. I'm sure that'll be a great time. And then on Sunday, for the kids, on Sunday, October 29th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. and running until 3:30 in the afternoon, is the Spook House Spooktacular that they did last year. And they will certainly encourage kids to be in costume, but there will not be a costume contest for that particular event. I should also mention that for the Saturday adults' party, there will also be a silent auction, appetizers, and soft drinks and what have you available. The cost, again, for the adults' evening is $10. The cost for the Sunday kids' event is $5 each, and I would encourage everybody to check out Goldbug Park. Tickets are available at the Placerville News Company, 409 Main Street, or also at the park. Steve, do we have any tickets here at Town Hall?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so check it out online or check it out out at Placerville News Company. Thank you, sir.
I took our grandsons to that last year, and they had -- we just had a wonderful time. So highly recommend that adult -- that event for families.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Uh, let's see here, the closed session report. City Attorney Driscoll.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight in closed session, the City Council did not take reportable action.
Great, thank you. Would someone like to adopt this agenda?
Move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ceremonial matters. We have won a proclamation declaring November 1st, 2017, as Extra Mile Day in the city of Placerville. And I will read said proclamation. It's relatively brief, but lots of fun. It's a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Placerville declaring November 1st, 2017, as Extra Mile Day in the city of Placerville. Whereas Placerville is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Placerville is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Placerville is a community which chooses to shine a light and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Placerville acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 575 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2017. Now therefore, I, John Clarici, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Placerville, State of California, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2017, as Extra Mile Day in the city of Placerville, and I commend this observance to all citizens. And anyway, yeah, it's a great thing, you know, Extra Mile Day's notwithstanding the level of volunteerism, support, and help that permeates this community, specifically Placerville, but Eldorado County in general is all something we should all be proud of. I cannot think of a single cause that, if you mention it to somebody, they will go, "That's something I want to be involved in," and always -- it's just amazing how this community responds to all sorts of things. We're actually coming up with a list of names, and we will provide them to the Extra Mile folks to kind of consider as part of this thing. So anyway, if anybody else wants to revel in the spirit of community and Extra Mile Day, by all means.
I think you did a great job.
Oh geez, all right.
Highlighting wonderful people in our community.
Well, I think we talk about it all the time.
That's true.
How fortunate we are, and, you know, and we do try, at least try to highlight everyone that's helped us out, and I've said it a thousand times, I don't know what we'd do without our volunteers.
Right. I would like to make one comment, actually back in the announcements and presentations. You know, we went to the art and wine thing on Saturday, my wife and I did, and we actually heard them perform the songs. You know, James -- I'm missing his last name right now, but he came here, and he's been before several times, has a great voice. He and the others performed the songs, and they were quite good. And we actually bought the CD, but they were very good, so I encourage everybody to go and buy the CDs. And I think it's for some sort of charitable thing, I don't -- or they're covering their costs, and it's 15 bucks, it's cheap. Anyway, just wanted to mention that, I forgot to do it, I was going to do that.
So as long as you're talking about art, is my mic on? It sounds like a -- anyway, I went to the presentation, you know, Teri.
Levoncha?
Levoncha.
Arts Council.
Who's ahead of the Arts Council. She's been trying to feature things at the local, up at where the --
The Thousand Hills.
Well, I'm going to call the -- okay.
Yeah.
And so this time, it was all about apples. And they've had a display up there, and they've had sculptures and pictures, and it's a lady that lives down south, and the -- but she -- it starts way back east in how she's collected all this information. And I'm going to tell you, you know, we live right here in Apple Hill. I learned more things from this lady about apples than I ever knew existed, and it was the most interesting talk. And I just, I think the display is still on now, and I would encourage people to go up there. Unfortunately, she's already, she's not going to be there, but she's kind of, you know, educated the folks who are there to kind of explain some of her works. And it was, like I say, Teri's trying to do things on a local level. Like, last time, she had George Wielden, and they featured geology, and I just, I just want to kind of encourage people to go up when she has these, you know, each month she's going to try to do something new. So anyway, it was great.
Thank you for mentioning that. You're right, that was, I went to the opening. I think you were there, too.
I was, and then the lady came back.
Came back, right. It was just fascinating stuff. Okay. Public comment, brief, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the City Council under specific or specified circumstances. The mayor, me, reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes, which I am. The mayor will recognize you, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. And be nice, follow the golden rule, don't say anything you wouldn't want to have someone say about you. Mr. Morris, do we have any written communications?
None.
Okay, great. Do us anybody from the public wish to make a comment?
Joseph Nichols. I guess, I haven't been here like five years. I called dispatch today on what looked like drug activity, a drug deal going down and prostitution, right on my, right out front of my house on Wiltsey. Wiltsey and Broadway, right up here. I live right down from Lumpson Park, I'm sure everybody knows, I'm sure you're not going to hear it, you're going to hear, you've heard this all before. I'm just, I guess dispatch asked me to come in and voice my opinions here and let you know how desperate it is. And I've been there, homeowner, for seven years. A lot has, a lot has been done for the problem. This town bends over backwards to help anybody who has a drug addiction. I'd like to applaud you on that. It's almost codependent. It really is. I see it. I've been in the program for 15 years. I know a lot of these guys, I've walked through the 12 steps. A lot of them choose to live in the bush. Somehow, they're beating the system. I'm not here to save anybody. I'm here to push them out. I'm not here to worry about them getting clean and sober. They have all the opportunities in the world to do it, more about the safety of that side of town. I mean, Lumpson Park should be a pearl of Placerville. You put a filter in that pond, the ducks come, the turtles, you have kids from Chanel School doing a day trip, have a farm down there, grow some corn. How beautiful is that? Why can't that happen? It's pretty simple. This is a little town. And a lot of people hate me when I say this. The number-one source feeding this problem and the little nickel-in-dime bags of heroin they're selling to all the kids up here comes from feeding the upper room up there on Broadway and the motels. If you think I'm crazy, there is a drug, there is not only drug trafficking, there's sex trafficking going through this town like you would not believe. And it's open. It's not even, and the people that are pushing a lot of this are themselves homeless. Nobody wants to do the little misdemeanor bust, I guess, only big felonies. And I know the police do the work they can. If someone calls the police in this town they shouldn't hear, I'll get someone there when I have the manpower. We need more police. Or we need the sheriffs to come in and collaborate. A fire break going up through Lumpson Park to save the airport would be a great ideal, and that way ambulances and police can get in there and get those campers that are cooking meth in the bush right now and selling heroin. And they're not going to stop. They're good kids, they probably wants good people. I'm not saying that. Once you get on this stuff, you don't stop till the wheels fall off, and I'm sure you've seen this. And your jails are full. AB 109, Prop 47, we can go on all day, but we need to change something up. Instead of trying to save them, what can we do to secure the safety of the people on this side of town? I know St. Patrick's has the upper room. Maybe someone can talk to them about moving it over to Mental Health in Diamond Springs. Then you can collaborate together, get a database on who needs help, who wants help and who doesn't. And then you have freeway exposure on that sliver of property. There's tax for your town. I'm sorry, I took up more time. I know you've heard all this, you're doing the best you can. And I heard something about Caltrans. Caltrans yard's right next to mine, while fixing Escatton Street, they destroyed my street with all their big equipment.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure you're aware of that. Wiltsey is jacked.
Yeah.
Marvin, who used to be on the board, did that street in the '50s or '60s. He just passed, rest in peace. I'm Joe Nichols, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe, very much.
I was unprepared.
No, no, you did very well. And these are all concerns we've heard, and we are desperately trying to figure out ways to deal with them, and a lot of the things that you brought up are very much true. And, but I do believe, in terms of the road, we have something going on, or not?
Well, we've already, we did Martin Lane.
Right.
There's nothing on Wiltsey that's planned right now.
Okay.
I mean, it's on our list.
It's on the list.
It's not on the list.
Okay. I'm the last house. My house is right there, down Wiltsey. Lumpson Park drains down the creek.
Right.
It goes right through my front yard. In front of my home, it got, it has to go under Martin Lane to get to Hangtown.
Right.
It can't get under there fast enough. It whirlpools. The water feeding my home goes on top of the creek. It whirlpooled the walls out. If that blows, it's going to destroy my home and the home next to me. I need rock put in there.
Okay. We'll take, you can take that up with the --
I don't want the street fixed, I just need rock before winter.
Okay.
And then leave me alone, I'll cement it in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Does anyone else wish to speak to us? Anyone else? Well, thank you. Okay. Um, okay, the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll-call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. Does anybody up here want to pull any of these items?
No, sir.
Does anybody have any questions about any of these items? I would like to make just one comment about one of the items, and that is, I believe it's 8.8. 8.8 is simply a, basically, it's a clarification about an item that we actually did several months ago when we did a land purchase or swap or whatever it was for Phase 2 of the Western Placerville Interchange Project. So this is not a new activity. What we have to do is just perfect some paperwork, if I remember correctly, to make sure that this actually can go through escrow so we can get that critical piece of land so Phase 2 can actually be done. So I, you know, showed up there, everything having to do with Western Placerville Interchange can sometimes be, kind of get some folks on question marks, but this is literally just paperwork to backfill against a decision that we made many, many months ago, so. Would the public like to comment on anything in the consent calendar?
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. I would like to comment on item 8.5, which is the amendment to the agreement with Municipal Services Parking Enforcement. And it says, "The resolution before you is to reduce the hours, which you change the enforcement time from 7:00 back to 6:00." And so to, in order to make that agreement work with the people who do the enforcement, it says the cost for this service will be reduced by $415 per month or about $0.37,041 and $0.12 for the remainder of the fiscal year. And the result is a budget savings of $3,741.12. But there is no disclosure here of the resulting loss of revenue to the parking fund balance. There is a cost for this savings, so what is it?
Didn't we disclose that when we -- didn't that get disclosed when we actually talked about the --
It did, it did. When you approved the new budget, we gave those numbers to you. Dave, I don't know, do you have those in front of you tonight? I don't have them with me.
I don't. But it was a combination of reducing your contingencies slightly.
Right.
And the fact that the overall activity on Sunday, the savings from that activity, it balanced, basically.
Right.
And so we had the reduction on Sundays as well as from 5 to, excuse me, 6 to 7:00.
Right.
So a combination of those with the budget cuts, we balanced the budget.
Right. But those numbers were disclosed when we made that decision about the balance of the numbers.
That decision was already made.
And how much the revenue was cut and how much we would save and it all kind of, yeah. It wasn't mentioned here, but this is a slightly different thing. This is just about the contract with the vendor, so. But that's a good question, Sue, I appreciate that. And like we said, it all balanced out, at least on paper, when we did all the numbering.
It didn't balance, we're losing --
Well, we're losing a little bit of money, but, yeah, but, you know.
And I think that's Sue's point.
Yeah. Right.
I would like to say that it would be good if -- It would be good if we were to track what those two things cost us, actually cost us in revenue over the next, the rest of the fiscal year. Because while they appear to balance on paper, it may not be true in reality. So I think we need to keep track of this. And while this was washed in with the free Sunday, it's still not tracked individually. I'd like to see these things tracked out individually so we know how much it costs us to reduce from 7 to 6 and how much it costs us to give everybody free parking on Sunday.
Yes.
I think when we made this decision, Sue, that Mark asked for that. Am I right?
We were going to do quarterly reporting.
We're going to do a follow-up so that we can track this.
Yeah. The intent is to never get behind, as we have in the past. See trends and address them as they.
Thank you, Sue. One item I would also like to just draw everyone's attention to is the, and this kind of just slipped my mind. Item 8.7, this agreement, that's actually an agreement by the county and through some wizardry of procedural stuff, we have to do something because the county's leasing some property within the city of Placerville. And my understanding is this is the, this will, this is the first part, and the district attorney moving from their current location in the older buildings down here by the courthouse over to the newer buildings over there behind the Fausel House. So they'll be moving over there, so.
Well, I thought it was over, oh, I didn't realize it was that. I was thinking it was on, it said Pacific Street.
Well, that is Pacific Street.
So I thought it was up those buildings that they owned by the park.
No.
Oh, so it's up on the other --
They're moving, they're moving in, yeah, they're moving.
Yeah, I think the point that the mayor is identifying is the item identifies the building that they're going to lease, which is a requirement between government agencies. But it didn't specifically say where they were vacating on Main Street.
Yeah, there's no reason for it to, but you're right, yeah.
No, but that's a matter of interest, so people know that.
But what is very interesting is this particular service, these particular addresses on Main Street have been a part of the very emotional discussions that have gone on with the whole moving of the courthouse and the destruction to Main Street that would occur if the district attorney left. And now the district attorney is leaving, and it has nothing to do with the courthouse project. So all of those folks that were so worried, they'll be able to soon see whether or not the district attorney really did buy, I guess, as many pizzas and sandwiches and products on Main Street.
Well, presumably, they'll be able to walk over.
I'm hoping that they'll still come over, yeah.
They'll buy coffee at the other end of town.
But I think it goes to prove that this is one of those things that these agencies have a right to locate their facilities wherever they want to, and irregardless of the arguments on either side for the courthouse, they're moving off of Main Street, so.
Because their current facilities are woefully inadequate.
Yeah, oh, I don't --
Oh, they'll be much nicer.
For no other reason, the parking.
They'll have plenty of parking.
It's just horrendous.
Okay. So you're --
Thank you for bringing that up. With that, I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
All righty. That was exciting. Okay. We didn't pull any items from the agenda. Ordinances, we will waive. We are being requested to waive the second reading of an ordinance pertaining to accessory dwelling units and zoning text amendments to Title 10, Placerville Zoning Ordinance, to bring the zoning ordinance into compliance with California State Housing laws amended by AB 2299 and SB 1069, and adopt said ordinance. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just to give a little background, this draft ordinance was considered by the Planning Commission at their September 5th meeting. And following a discussion of draft ordinance, the commission is recommending to the city to adopt the ordinance. The ordinance was brought to your council at your October 10th meeting, that was your last meeting. The ordinance was introduced for the first reading without modification. The ordinance will take effect 30 days following its adoption. Staff is requesting that you waive the second reading of an ordinance pertaining to accessory dwelling units and the zoning text amendments to Title 10 of the city's zoning ordinance to bring it into compliance with California State Housing Law as amended by the two referenced bills, and then adopt said ordinance. No further comments have been received by staff between October 10th and tonight. And that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for staff from up here?
No.
Comments about this particular item? Would the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to waive the second reading of the ordinance and make a motion to adopt said ordinance.
Second?
Okay.
Roll call?
No.
Roll call? Do we have to? Do we have to? I'm never going to remember this. It's this weird mental block I have.
That's right.
It's an ordinance, so we do it, right. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Briefly, I'd like to thank the planning staff and the commission for their hard work on this. This is all a part of trying to look for ways to have affordable housing. Accessory dwelling units, and whatever they've been called in the past, are an intricate part of that, and so I appreciate having us up to snuff.
Yes, thank you for observing that. Let's see. Adopt a, item 12.1, adopt a resolution approving the purchasing authority and limits for the city manager, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mayor Clarici. Some time ago, last December, almost a year ago, the council requested during the city manager's evaluation that myself and Mr. Warren, Director of Finance, review and make a recommendation for purchasing limits for different circumstances for the city manager. And for years, it has been a purchasing limit of $5,000, and a liability settlement authority of $1,000. This has kind of been a policy, a past practice. I know when I became city manager in November of 2000, I was told those were my limits. Now, that may have been a good, something that was based upon a document, but I never saw it. So, it's kind of been a somewhat loose policy, but one that's been accepted and used over the years. Both Mr. Warren and I felt that, and Mr. Morris as well, that we should get this in writing, so we have something to point to, and we have a document there that establishes this, establishing a formal policy. So what we did is we put together these recommendations for you, and I'll just go through them. The first circumstances is where it is equipment, services, and supplies that are within the city's either operating budget or CIP budget. And so, these are things that in essence would have been approved by the council during the budget process. So with that, we, and these limits, certainly, there's nothing magical about them, there's no legal requirements with respect to these limits, they can be whatever the council was comfortable with, but I think Mr. Warren and I felt that these were practical limits, and they would also promote greater efficiency in the operation of government by doing that. Liability claims, $10,000, and that kind of would take care of a lot of what we call, and certainly $10,000 is a lot of money, I don't mean to demean that, but the run-of-the-mill claims, you get a lot of claims, $2,500, $3,500, occasionally they get larger than that. And normally, the council is informed of these claims when the claims are brought to the council anyways for either acceptance or rejection. So, that number was different, obviously, than 25, but we felt that anything over $10,000 certainly required council and should require council approval. The next two, items three and four, are kind of similar but different. And I'm going to go to four first, and then I'll go back to three. Four is situations where an emergency has been declared. And you remember, a few meetings back, earlier this year, an ordinance was brought to establish emergency powers for the city manager. So when you're in that kind of a situation, you have a wildfire, or you have a flood, or something like, where the city manager has declared an emergency, then there is, there's not even an amount on there, because who knows what it's going to be at that point in time. There's obviously the need for immediate action, and it has to be done in order to preserve public health and safety. So, that's different than item three. Item three is not in an emergency situation as defined by the code, but what is practically an emergency situation, let's say we have a sewer backup or a creek overflow, not so much of such a scale that it would endanger the city's population in a large mass, but rather, an individual property might be affected. And there's a need to get somebody in there to do remedial work, to clean the property up, and to, the faster you get to that, the better it's going to be, and the more you're going to keep your costs down. So this is for those types of circumstances. And that is, again, a $25,000 limitation. And in both items three and four, the city manager's actions have to be ratified by the council, so it's brought back to the council for your approval and ratification. I think that's it, unless there's anything Dave wanted to add to it. If they have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer.
Any questions?
Not any. I just think it makes sense. You know, we did it for transit, and, you know, and I just, we approve it anyway. I don't think we ever turned it down.
Right.
No, but we can trust our city manager, we know he's going to make good choices.
Well, I think we have a very transparent process already in place, and there's a lot of checks and balances, and our staff is, is, just embodies the utmost of ethical standards, and it's critically important that you have the tools you need in order to conduct business and to secure the well-being of our community. So, like Patty said, this just makes sense.
And if you consider that Cleve is running a $21 million business, a signature authority of $25,000 is not particularly high. Now granted, it's a much larger organization, but if memory serves correctly, I believe the general manager of S-Mud has a $1 million signing authority on some items, so it just kind of shows you, $25,000.
We don't have a million dollars to...
Well, I know. Well, you might be able to get his hands on a million bucks if he absolutely had to. Okay. Yeah, it comes with a lot of responsibility. Okay. Would the public like to comment on item 12.1?
Yeah.
Okay.
With that, I will move approval for this...
Second.
We got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Oh, my gosh, that didn't make...
Yes. All right.
Hopefully, they make things a little more...
12.2.
Fluid.
There's a lot here. Okay, we're approving a consulting service agreement with Drake Haglen and Associates in the amount not to exceed $1 million and some extra money for construction management services for the Western Placerville Interchange's Phase Two project, CIP 41828, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute the same, and approve Authorization Number Nine to the consulting services agreement with Dockin Engineering, in the amount not to exceed $192,000 for construction support engineering, and approving $470,000 budget appropriation in SHOP, minor revenues for the said project, and approve $5,542,000 budget appropriation in STIP. I'm assuming that's supposed to be our tip. Is it RIP? Yeah, yeah, okay. STIP revenues for the said project, approving $335,000 budget appropriation in state transit assistance from EDCTA revenues for the said project, approving $2,766,000 budget appropriation in CMAC, and $1 million, which I guess in part is also $1,100,000 from the Transit Authority also, so some of their CMAC money is coming over and augmenting some of our CMAC money. Revenues for the said project, approving $272,000 budget appropriation in urban STBGP revenues for the said project, approving a $1,430,000 budget appropriation in PTMISA funds, also from the Transit Authority, revenues for the said project, approving $837 budget appropriation in Eldorado Irrigation District, boy, we've got everybody involved. Revenues for the said project, and authorizing city staff to release construction contract documents for the public bidding. I'm assuming Ms. Neves will walk us through the alphabet soup of acronyms, make headers tails of the money, and do it all in two minutes.
My pleasure. Good evening, Mayor Clarici and members of the council. Following council's approval of the supplemental EIR and selection of Modified Alternative D as the preferred alternative for the project on June 24th in 2014, the project has progressed through design right-of-way delivery agreements and utility coordination and received project funding allocation at the August 2017 California Transportation Commission meeting and its program for this fiscal year. The construction of the project will include a new eastbound US 50 off-ramp at Ray Lawyer Drive, realignment signalization of the Ray Lawyer Drive-Fornie Road intersection, construction of a new Class 1 bicycle and pedestrian facility, a new Eldorado County Transit Authority park-and-ride facility, realignment of Forney Road, and the various utility relocations as necessary to support these improvements. City council received, or, excuse me, city received the authorization to proceed for all construction-related activities, and among these necessary activities to construction include procurement of a construction management and construction engineering design support services. This project does represent one of the largest capital improvement projects the city has undertaken, and due to its size, complexity, and federal documentation requirements, city staff has determined that the project's construction management requirements exceed available resources of the city engineering staff. On May 9th of 2017, council authorized the city engineer to prepare and release an RFP Request for Proposals for Construction Management Services. Two proposals were received, and an independent panel consisting of heavy construction and engineering professionals from various agencies in the region selected Drake Haglen as the number-one proposal. The city staff met with the principal and project manager from DHA, who is in the office, or, excuse me, in the audience, Mr. Howard Zabel. He and I sat and met on October 15, or October 5th, excuse me, and a revised proposal was then submitted on October 9th in the amount of $1,225,727.43, which represents approximately 12.6% the cost of construction. Just as a gauge of reference, the industry standard for construction management is right around between 15% to 18%. When construction commences, design revisions may also be necessary as field conditions can be found differing from the project plans. To address such items, construction support engineering through the design firm, which is Dockin Engineering, and is separate from construction management, is necessary. Dockin submitted a request for Authorization Nine to provide these services, and after fee negotiation with city staff, the amount requested for Authorization Nine was reduced to $192,878, which represents approximately 2% the cost of construction. Industry standard for construction support engineering is approximately 3% to 5% the cost of construction, so we're doing well in both categories. As such, the Western Placerville Interchange's Phase Two project funding does consist of various sources as described by Mayor Clarici, and they are summarized for you not only in the staff report, but also in Attachment One to the staff report. And the various funding sources also mentioned, we have various partners on the project consisting of Eldorado County Transit Authority, Eldorado County Transportation Commission, Eldorado Irrigation District, and also Caltrans coming through as a participating partner in the state through SHOP and STIP funds, as well as STBGP funds. Attachment One does summarize the project funding, recommending a total budget appropriation of $11,652,620. Construction management services with DHA, and Authorization Number Nine for construction support engineering with Dockin, comes to a total of $1,418,605.43, which is well within the proposed budget appropriations of $11,652,620. As such, staff is recommending to adopt the resolution as outlined in the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, just because we are where we are. Can any of this money, any of it, I mean any of it, be used on any other roads in town, or to fill potholes?
My apologies, I did have a note to comment on that, and the answer is no.
Thank you. So if you meet people on the street, and they say, "Why are they spending all this money over here, they ought to fix the road in front of my building?", this money cannot be used for that. Okay, the second thing is, not a single roundabout is part of Phase Two, whatever this is.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I didn't get a chance to hand this out prior to the council meeting, but it is available on our city website, located on the Capital Improvement Project website. We also have a larger exhibit there posted on the wall. We are building the area shown in blue, which is Phase Two, and it does not contain a roundabout.
Thank you so much.
There is no funded portion for a roundabout at this time.
Thank you. Okay. Would anyone else have any questions for staff on this item? Or comments?
I don't have any questions, but I'm going to comment. I know we have said this time and time again, but the public, no one knows, has any idea how much work went into this. And all the agencies that were mentioned, they have just, they've worked tirelessly, and we've thanked them tirelessly, but we do appreciate it. But I just, I just want people to know that this was monumental, and we're thankful, and it's going to be a wonderful project. And, again, thank you. It seems so, you know, like such a little thing, because I know what you guys all went through, and the number of hours, and sleepless nights, and, but, we appreciate it.
I'm very grateful for the funding partners, for the team members, for Eldorado County Transit, and also the Transportation Commission, for all levels of city staff, not just engineering. Public Works has been extremely helpful in doing the design review. We've been so blessed, truly, to have everybody involved on this project that has participated, including the state. Caltrans came in at the 11th hour with about a half a million dollars, when we were counting our pennies and finding our couch cushions were bare. So, we were very grateful for them. I'd also like to echo Patty's sentiments, and recognize your advocacy, our staff's advocacy, as well as the advocacy of the Eldorado County Transportation Commission in appealing this project to the California State Transportation Commission. This would not be moving forward without your fierce advocacy on behalf of the city, and we're very, very grateful for that. And, as you so eloquently pointed out in our staff report, this project represents an inordinate accomplishment for our region, for our city. The fact that our city is the lead agency on this monumental project speaks to the dedication of our entire staff, as well as our very dedicated partners on this project. So, it's exciting to see this moving forward, and I was blown away by the timeline, the construction timeline on this. My gosh, when I read that the construction begins January 2018, and construction completion is estimated June of 2019, that's amazing. I mean, that's around the corner, so...
We don't want anybody to take their money back.
Yeah, so, congratulations, and thank you to our entire staff for your advocacy on our behalf. My pleasure, thank you.
Well, I was, do you want to say?
Well, I would.
You're going to wait, you're pointing, you want to, okay. Would the public like to comment on this project?
No.
Okay, thank you, all right. Councilmember Acuna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would also like to resoundingly thank all those many people that have been involved in this. I remember attending the first meetings on this back in 2008, in various workshops and various different city councils, and different transportation commissions, and state transportation commissions, that brought this thing forward in bits and pieces, but held it together at the same time, which was really critical. All that time, maintaining working relationships, which is very unusual across Caltrans, and with our county partners, and our other organizations that are involved in this, the utilities, per and what have you. This will, I am sure, once we open this, everybody's going to say, "Wow, why didn't they build this ramp 10 years ago?" Because the traffic on Fairland and what have you, there's going to be a huge shift in the traffic going up to the Government Center. And the Government Center should have always had, in a perfect world, a fully functioning set of ramps, because it is a very important group of buildings. And we're getting, this is another huge piece to put in that, putting this puzzle together, and with so much of the population west of us now, I mean, if we had to have two pieces, having these two pieces are the key, and I think we're going to have a real improvement in our local circulation, as well as having the convenience of being able to get up and down to all those important county buildings. So, thank you to staff, and I really look forward to a successful bid opening on December 15th. Will that be taking place in the engineering department?
Depending upon the amount of bidders, we may have it here at Town Hall. But I, if it's okay, I'd like to also say a thank you to Mr. Warren. He has been an amazing help with everything with the funding on this project, and Dave couldn't have done it without you, man.
Yeah, and I'd also like to just sort of, obviously, all the, you know, recognizing all the various parts, and the staff, and everyone's work on this, especially last year, when it looked like the CTC might take the money away, and they didn't take the money away, because of a lot of the advocacy that Councilmember Thomas mentioned. You know, sometimes that Ray Lawyer Drive overcrossing is called the bridge to kind of know where. On the other hand, you know, I see this too, as, I mean, ultimately, when Placerville Drive overcrossing and all of that gets done, that's going to really help commercially along the Placerville Drive corridor, but that project is not going to happen anytime soon, just because of the phasing and the way money rolls out of the state of California. But I definitely see an opportunity where this, this Phase Two starts to open up more of the Forney Road side of things, and also the top of Ray Lawyer Drive. I mean, we tend to focus on the Government Center, which is where most of the traffic goes, but there's a lot of both residential and commercial property up on top of Ray Lawyer Drive, going down towards Rayleigh's, down towards Placerville Drive, that could be potentially developed, and to the benefit of the city, if the circulation and whatnot on the road system is functioning better. You know, the Placerville Drive and, and especially that chunk of Forney Road is one of the major sales tax generators, the major sales tax generator for the city. So anything that kind of augments that circulation down there, and maybe assists in commercial and residential development as well, I think would be a great benefit to everybody. And it's very exciting, and we're going to spend millions of dollars in town on a construction project, and you can't, you can't really go wrong with that, so.
I'll make a motion to approve item 12.2, as outlined by staff.
We have a motion in second. All in favor? No!
Roll call. That's a lot of money, Mr. Mayor. That's a lot of money, Mr. Mayor.
Even lots of money dropped.
You know, I get lost. I'll figure this thing out in about two more months. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item 12.3, adopt a... Item 12.3, adopt a revol- revolution.
A revolution.
We've already had enough of those.
A revolution. Anyway, adopt a resolution approving a five-year agreement with ActiveNet for registration software services, including a one-time setup cost in the amount not to exceed $23,930, and authorizing the Director of Community Services to execute the same. Mr. Yule?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Department has been utilizing ActiveNetwork's registration program known as CLASS for Processing Recreation Program registrations, rentals, and point-of-sale purchases since January of 2003. CLASS software allows participants to register for classes over the counter by phone, fax, or mail. ActiveNetwork gave notice that as of November 30th of this year, CLASS will no longer be supported. As a result, new network software must be purchased prior to November 30th. After looking at three options for new software, attending demonstrations for each product, and contacting other local recreation departments, staff has concluded that ActiveNet is the most efficient network software that will provide for improved customer service and offers the best value for the city. In addition to processing registration, ActiveNet generates a variety of reports, including class rosters, mailing lists, team rosters, instructor payroll, percentage reports, cash balance reports, Dave likes those, and daily GL reports. The purchase of ActiveNet will fulfill the current and future needs of the department, including online registration, which we've been waiting for, for quite some time, provide an inventory mechanism for the Goldbug Park gift shop and sales. It'll take photos and provide passes for the pool, and allow for Goldbug and the Aquatic Center to process revenue onsite in real time. These upgrades will provide convenience for registration, speed up the registration process, and streamline point-of-sale transactions and entries, which will hopefully save the city money. The city council adopted the fiscal year 2017-18 capital improvement program budget with appropriation of $33,000 for the onetime, the one-time setup cost for Recreation Registration Software Program. The proposed software agreement with ActiveNet includes $23,930 in one-time setup cost and is within the $33,000 projected budget. The projected annual budget cost for operating ActiveNet is $23,408, which was accounted for within the current operating budget. Based on staff's analysis, ActiveNet will potentially save the city $669 on an annual basis for the service fees. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So you won't be writing down registrations on papyrus rolls anymore up there? And you're going to go right by the 20th century and write straight to the 21st, I get.
Correct. We're looking into the future.
There, man, that just sounds so good. Does anybody have any less snarky questions or comments for this? Apparently not. Well, we think it's great, and we're happy that finally, after at least a couple of years of me being on the council, being able to make this happen is very gratifying. So would the public like to comment on our space-age technology that we're going to use here to run our Parks and Recs program? Good job. Thank you. Yay. You know, actually, this is very important. You know, the Parks and Rec Department is one of those things that the city does that actually, you know, it's one of those public-facing things, and I don't know too many people that don't like it. You know, I mean, you rare, I mean, sometimes people, well, they don't have this, or they didn't do that. But for the most part, people really like the programs, like the folks back here that do, do the programs. And it's one of those public-facing things that the city does that is, is just a great thing. So the fact of the matter is, is that if we're making their work easier for them and easier for the public to access it, there can, at least in my humble opinion, it cannot do anything but reap tremendous benefits to the community and the folks that are using, using Parks and Recreation. You see, my comments now have just spurred other comments. Go right ahead, Mark.
Steve, I do have a question, and I really do appreciate you bringing us from the 19th to the 21st century. And it is really important that the users, as I've found out with my work on at Goldbug, having that easy, friendly interface with the, with the person's favorite form of communication, whether it's iPhone or internet, what it might be, is critical. Have you and IT looked at this and felt that we're going to have enough power or bells and whistles to go forward for some time, so that we stay in the 21st century?
Yes, that's definitely our intent, and we spent a lot of time, thanks to Dave Warren and George Spriggs, we've gone through it thoroughly, and we're convinced that the recommended changes to the hardware will suffice for quite some time. It's now web-based, so that's a really good thing. So as changes are made, they're made holistically through the, all of the customers who have this product. So we should be in really good shape going forward.
Was our staff able to look at this from another agency that's using it to see? I'm thinking it's going to make everybody's life a little easier to have a more modern, having to write the scroll every night.
Yeah, we discussed the software and the services with four other local recreation districts.
Thank you, Steve.
And I just applaud the city making, you know, your, our wonderful Park and Rec services more user-friendly and accessible to the public. And I see this as a form of customer service, and also delighted that our good folks over at Goldbug Park especially can get the support services they need for the gift shop. I mean, inventory management is a critical thing, and that folks can, can access those goods and services in a more efficient manner. So well done, and we're delighted that this is going to be moving forward to make our city more efficient. Hold it.
Steve, I know the answer, but I'm going to have you answer it. For the folks that don't have a computer or have access to the internet, what do they do?
Oh, we have all kinds of options. They can call in if they prefer. They can mail in, or they can walk up to our counter. Any way we can get more revenue, we'll figure out a way to do it.
Sounds good.
Steve's doors are always open.
I, I will make a motion.
And I will second the motion.
Okay. All, oh, please call the roll.
Steve, do we need to say what the motion is?
It's a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Adopt a resolution.
Adopt a resolution. Yeah.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, Steve.
Council reports from other agency meetings. El Dorado County Transit Authority?
No meeting yet.
No meeting.
Nope.
El Dorado County Transportation Commission?
No meeting.
No meeting, but I have a, I have a, a call with CalCog. We're going to have a, you know, where we call in and here, we'll have a report from them, so I will.
What a call.
Just what's going on, and have them bring us up to date and tell us, and so I'll have a report next time.
Okay, great.
The Local Agency Information Commission?
We will meet in December, sir.
Alrighty. Secog, yes, we had a meeting. It was all very interesting. Actually, the very interesting part was a workshop with lunch after the meeting where we discussed marijuana and.
After lunch?
After lunch, no, during lunch. We ate lunch and discussed the marijuana. And it was fascinating, and there's lots of moving parts and lots of people. There's folks that are definitely starting to narrow in on the things that they either do want to do or don't want to do. And I have a feeling that there'll be folks that will invent a wheel for us on any option we may wish to take in the really close future. In fact, I have some feelers out to some of my fellow Secogians to, I just made that up. I just made that up.
That was good.
I know.
Is there a statue of the Secogians anywhere?
It's a secret ceremony. It's kind of like the Elks. Anyway, to start getting some of that information from them. I know that there are several cities that are.
You mean what they're proposing?
What they're proposing to do, what they're adopting, essentially. And it runs the gamut from prohibitions to, to, you know, very aggressive prohibitions, whatever.
Well, I'm sure we've all seen the headlines with smud and their concern over the increased need for electricity and how it's going to, I mean, it's interesting what this whole thing is leading to. And the warehouses in Sacramento, I guess you can't rent one anymore because they've all been, you know, and the rents are going sky high, and it's just things that you probably don't, you know, you didn't think about.
That's true.
It's all.
The, most of the folks that, that are kind of experts in this area from other states and whatnot, they believe that it'll sort of be like, almost like the car-making industry 100 years ago, when you might have had 100 people making cars, and within 10 or 15 years, it was down to like 10. And a lot of people are going to jump into this market because they think, wow, there's a lot of money to be made. And then a lot of people are going to go out of business, because they're going to get in, they won't be able, you know, for like a lot of these kinds of things. And then it'll settle down after so much time.
There was a report in one of our magazines, and that very same thing happened in Colorado.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
A lot of folks have already gone broke.
A lot of cities over, it's almost like over, when you overzone for commercial, because it's almost like if you build it, if you zone it, they will come. They're overzoning for indoor growing plants, and if, they did a quick survey of the state, and they said they're already, now is on the books like 10 times the amount you need for any rational sort of projected, you know, amount that might be needed for the state. So yeah, there'll be growing pains, but that's just, you know, a discussion for a different day. I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that, because it was very interesting. And that was it for Secog. And the 2x2?
It's a quarterly meeting and.
Haven't been there yet, okay. Great. Do we have any requests for future agenda items from the council?
No.
Okay. City manager and staff reports?
Exciting stuff.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The first one, I know on a couple of different occasions, Councilmember Acuna had asked for our costs for, that we incurred during the storms last winter. So I thought I would bring this report. This is what we have submitted to FEMA, a report of the dollars that we are claiming. You'll notice in this report that there's some, some color coding on there, and I won't go specifically through all of that. The main thing is to know some of the projects have been lined out. That's because they were determined ineligible for funding. So you'll see those on there. Some of these projects, as I noted in my report, we are trying to pre-fund prior to getting money from FEMA, because they need to be done. Couple of them at the wastewater treatment plant, and there's a couple of others that we are looking at. In fact, we'll be coming back to you still with Measure H revisions, recommendations, based on needing funding to take care of a couple of these projects prior to getting the FEMA funding. FEMA funding, I'm saying six months to a year. I think Dave Warren is saying a year to 18 months. So it's going to be out of their way. It just, it just depends. I saw a report that came through the other day from, I believe it was from County OES that said, the feds have not actually put any money into our, the, the winter storm event yet.
Wow.
They've noted, they've recognized it as a, you know, there was a declaration declared, but they have not funded any money in that, in that event yet. So it's going to, it's going to be a while. They will, they will, and it's a question of how much. It's probably part of them getting these reports. These reports have been approved now, and they're now going through.
The deadlines passed, isn't it?
Yes, yes. They are now going through the federal process, and we are sitting, waiting to see what the next step is, so. So this is just for your information. If you have any questions, myself, or Steve, or Pierre, or Rebecca, or Dave can answer it, I hope.
I'm a panel of experts.
I do have a question. So you mentioned that some of these projects will need to be done before funding is authorized. So where will that pot of money come from?
As I mentioned, we'll be coming back with you to do another revision to Measure H.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Measure H, Measure L funding. We've already discussed those. Have we discussed those with Measure H committee yet, Dave?
Yes, we have.
We have.
Oh, you have, okay.
So it's just a matter of bringing those back to you next, so that, and that'll, that'll be temporary, well, temporary assuming that they get funded by FEMA. If they don't, we'll have to look at shifting those funds further.
Sure. But when the money comes in from FEMA, we can backfill that.
Correct. And I want to emphasize too, Dave's doing a good job of juggling right now too, because we're mentioning using a lot of these Measure L funds, Measure H, Measure L funds, Measure L especially, we're not getting a whole lot of those yet.
Right.
The, what would be the third quarter, so July to September, the first, this, of the second quarter of Measure L, I don't think, well, we've been getting a little bit coming in, right, that they give us advance, that they give us of sales tax, but we don't have a lot of that money yet. So, Dave, you want to add to that?
We can charge it, right?
Use the credit card?
Use the credit card.
We're receiving a little over $500,000, $500,000 every quarter from Measure L.
Okay. So obviously, not all of these projects would qualify for Measure H, Measure L funds. But we're talking about the, the projects that would qualify, the water sewer projects, those are the ones we would use.
Correct. And most of these are, they're either, most of the ones, the ones that we're pre-funding are either sewer or roads, correct, Dave?
Okay, great. I just want to make that clear to the public.
Yes.
That we're not using Measure H, Measure L to, you know, do projects all over town.
This is not a, this is not a loan. These are eligible projects, but we think the fund will be reimbursed from FEMA at a future date.
Okay, great. Because that's really important for us to clarify.
What we're, what we're planning on doing is deferring some of the other larger projects within Measure H, Measure L to afford the cash flow until we get reimbursed from FEMA.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. And an oral report on improvements to Highway 50. Ms. Neves?
Good evening, Mayor Clarici, again. Just wanted to give the council and the public an update. At the last council meeting, Councilmember Acuna requested staff to follow up again with Caltrans regarding the traffic that we experienced on a fluctuating peak basis on Highway 50. And coincidentally, the next day, we had a conference call for the Highway 50 Operational Study Working Group, which consists of Caltrans, El Dorado County Transit Authority, El Dorado County Transportation Commission, and the city. During that phone call, I conveyed Councilmember Acuna's, as well as supported by other council members', desire to look into the Highway 50 project traffic operational efforts we've, which has been exhausted for some time now. With regards to the various components, you know, the questions always come along, have you guys looked at the signal timing? The answer to that's yes. We have exhausted that avenue thoroughly. A lot of it now has come down to the restriction based on actual driver behavior. The signal timing, if you extend it much beyond where it's at right now, you end up causing some serious safety concerns, because cross-traffic will see the, the delay in getting their green light tripped, and they will actually start running red lights, and then you end up having some serious accidents. The volume of traffic on Highway 50 has also been exhaustively evaluated. It goes, it fluctuates anywhere from 48,000 to 5,000 cars during peak seasons, and so, which is pretty exhaustive. And just to give a familiarity with how traffic functions, traffic functions a lot like water. And to put things in a perspective, we're trying to shove about a million gallons through a garden hose right now. And so with that, we are looking at a couple of ways to address that, not only with actual project delivery improvements, but also with other operational improvements. Some suggestions have been the use of managed lanes or HOV lanes. Another option is the use of what Caltrans calls zipper lanes, which they use those on the Golden Gate Bridge, as well as the Coronado Bay Bridge, where through peak times, they will actually do lane adjustments and add an additional lane in the direction of the heaviest flow of traffic. In our case, we would be then adding, we would shift traffic over in the westbound direction on a Sunday afternoon, so that we would have three lanes available instead of two. And one of the ways that that could be done is exploring, getting clear span for the pedestrian over crossings, which would mean rebuilding those. There are other ways that would be substantially helpful in addressing those items. I know it's a bit of a unfortunate received word around here, but roundabout is an effective way of addressing traffic flow. But that not being the popular choice around here, that's obviously something that we're not looking at as a first option. And then there's also the option of adding in an additional westbound auxiliary lane. But all of these options, as well as many more that we may not have thought of, can be and will be explored. Caltrans, you know, Caltrans is a great partner in a lot of ways, in that they don't force their will upon us when it comes to project delivery. You know, they are very excited to assist in delivering a project, but if the community isn't really behind it, they will sit silent and, and allow the community to feel their own threshold of pain for the traffic impact. And so that's essentially what has happened, and feeling. And so that's essentially what has happened, and feeling our own threshold of pain for that traffic impact, they are happy to help. They have an on-call public outreach consultant that they are working with on developing a scope for initial public outreach efforts on the Highway 50 corridor. We have a follow-up meeting in about one to two months to review the proposed scope with city staff, as well as all the partners in Caltrans. And then the goal is to begin public outreach meetings to start talking about it on a community and collaborative level in about four months. So we really, you know, we really do want to solicit appropriate community input and, you know, and figure out what works for our community. So with that, that kind of summarizes the effort so far. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just two comments.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Neves. Again, going back to a number of different terms in office and committees I've sat on, discussion, oh, probably four or five years ago, Caltrans, as you've very nicely described, reminded us at that time that they had come to Placerville, and they do exactly as Rebecca just described, and the community had turned them away, very substantial projects 25, 30 years ago. They still have very clear memories of that, and institutional memory is very important, and I respect that. At the same time, I look at the project efforts that have gone on with the Camino Safety Project, the one that Vice Mayor Thomas talked about earlier this evening, and the number of community meetings that I attended back in 2000 and whatever, 10, as either a member of the Transportation Commission or just a member of the community, working with that entire Camino region. And at the same time, the tremendous and tragic accidents that were occurring, the fatalities that were occurring, they tried few fixes, and everybody gradually realizes that what they're on the verge of doing now is the real safety project that needs to happen, that's make that a divided, make it a true freeway. And I certainly appreciate your report and your efforts. It sounds like we are well on the way to recognizing or announcing to Caltrans that the westbound traffic has reached an unacceptable level through a large amount of the community, and that their willingness to start in just a few months to do community outreach, and if it takes the same successful path that Camino has taken, then I think that we, as a community, are on our way to getting the issue resolved. So thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Rebecca, I think we are all delighted by your update. Thank you so much, and we all look forward to working with our entire staff to embrace this ongoing community outreach to get this solved. I was, I think the community was disheartened at the Camino Safety Project meeting this last week. A lot of the community members there were talking about how, you know, how is this project going to help the, you know, connectivity and the traffic, the Apple Hill traffic? And neighbors were lamenting the fact that they couldn't get to Placerville. People in Camino were upset that they couldn't get to Placerville efficiently on the weekends. And we want people to get to Placerville, my goodness, we want to welcome with open arms. And Caltrans said point-blank, "This project, this $50 million project, won't do anything to fix this traffic."
No, it won't.
The problem is in Placerville, you know, to a large degree, and this project won't do a thing to help that. So I think, you know, you're so right, that the community support will be paramount for this. Caltrans needs that from us. So, you know, looking outside our pond even, and engaging our neighbors on, you know, outside our city limits, too, to help, you know, tell our story, so to speak, because it equally impacts them, is gonna be critical. And my father sat on that community effort 25, 30 years ago, and I remember hearing his stories about the overpass and the bypass and all the other scenarios that the public was just up in arms about, and I do know that Caltrans has memories of that. However, the traffic scenario 25, 30 years ago bears absolutely no resemblance to the traffic scenario today. It is a new day, and it is time that we address this once in the fall, so thank you so much and look forward to that.
And I think in those days, too, there was a lot of the folks who had lived here for so long, and they were very possessive, not wanting to let our little rural area be overrun.
Sure.
And so, but that's gone. I mean, not that we're still not rural, we are, but as we've said, I mean, this Highway 50 is just, it's almost a transit.
That's right. And GPS has greatly impacted our local roads that weren't impacted 25 years ago, as traffic is being funneled to our narrow roads and neighborhoods.
Exactly.
So that's just wonderful, thank you so much.
You know, this past week, these last two weekends, eastbound Highway 50 has backed up to Bass Lake Road on one weekend, and Cambridge Road on this most recent weekend. And I have never seen Apple Hill traffic start at Bass Lake Road. I don't know where they were in September, but they certainly did all arrive in October weekend, so...
But Mark, I think it's more than just Apple Hill.
It could, I'm certain...
There's a lot going on further up.
The economy is better.
There's a, there's a couple of things we might, yeah, a couple of things we might want to keep in mind. One thing about the Camino project was, Caltrans made it very clear that they were gonna run a K-rail up through the middle of the highway, and they were gonna do that irrespective of anything else, because they have a safety issue, and they were gonna stop people from making left-hand turns. And they basically went to the community and said, "We'll work with you," and the bigger project finally evolved from that. But initially, it was, "We're gonna run the K-rail right up through there, because we have to stop people from getting T-boned on Highway 50." The project that came after that was then a process that went together with the city, with them. Plus, they're bringing an awful lot of money, they're bringing $50 million to this thing, so it's a slightly different animal, because we're gonna be doing some community meetings without $50 million in our pocket, and that's gonna be a slightly different animal.
Yeah, we'll get that.
And thank God we don't have fatalities as a reason.
No, no, we just have people that can't stay on Highway 50 because they get antsy. The, although, the problem with it is if you, if you push enough people down through the highway, and then you push enough people out into the main, onto the surface streets around town, you're, you will, I don't know, fatalities, but you will start to see more accidents and things because people just, there's just too much traffic.
They're already doing it.
The one thing that we should know, too, about all those efforts that were done like 30 years ago, I mean, those, I think it might have even been 40 years ago when they showed up here. Caltrans took the design and defend mode back in those days. They came in with a couple of projects and said, "Aren't we great, pick one." As we've talked about, I'd like to get those 3D models up here, because if you'll notice a couple of things, I have memories of them, because they used to have one over there at the county building, and I've seen them up in Marysville. One of the intersections on Mosquito Road was gonna tear apart that end of town. I mean, they were basically gonna run like a diamond up through there, and it was gonna rearrange that part of town in order to get the design curves right, because the part of the freeway now that is a freeway before you get to Bedford isn't designed for freeway speeds. That's why you have to slow down, you have to slow to 40 degrees, because none of those curves are designed for what would be typically called freeway speeds. And then you have to put intersections down here, because you got at least one, which is 49 and 50, and those all gonna have, those all take space. They all take space. And I, one of the challenges either for the depressed freeway or the raised freeway, was how do you get people on and off that structure? And it meant making some pretty serious changes to town. So Caltrans had a different attitude in those days, and the project itself was a little scary in terms of what it could potentially do to the community. So there was a reason why they kind of pushed back on them.
Oh, exactly.
And you have to remember, back when that project was actually put out there, the freeway was only 15 years old, because they had just put the freeway through in '64, whenever they finished this project. And we have had one experience with Caltrans, which was fairly positive, and that was the improvements they made, what, 20 years ago, 15 years ago out here, Ox Lane, you know, the improvements connecting Main Street and Placerville Drive. Those projects are projects that I think were done a little better and under kind of a newer age sort of Caltrans. But I invite the fact that we can have this discussion, I think it's, I've sort of poohed the idea that they'd ever do anything for the freeway, and now just traffic, you're right, the traffic these last three weekends has been just horrible. And it really does, I mean, even like, you know, we kind of get after the Antique Fair and the Craft Fair, but even the thing on Saturday, the Art and Wine Festival, was causing traffic jams up Main Street and Broadway. And I think we gotta rethink really long and hard about what happens on Main Street in the fall, because it is just, there's no safe weekends anymore, I don't think, where you're not just gonna say, "Okay, we can close the road, we'll do it because we want to do it," but then we have to figure out a way to do the traffic, and we've gotta think about that even a little bit more. So anyway, my two cents.
It becomes more crucial now than it...
Oh, yeah, the traffic is, the volumes are just incredible.
You know, John, you said it really well last, at our last meeting, you talked about probably the three phases that this will take, and there'll be the study, there'll be the short term and the long term. And the short term probably will be some sort of a third lane going west. We have a really good relationship now that didn't exist 25 years ago. We have the eastbound project, which surprisingly, if you send that many cars east, you kind of almost have to have the same size pipe to send them west. And so we can build off of the proven volumes of traffic that we move through here with the project that's sitting out there, because there were rooms full of folks that doubted that that would ever work, and the creek would be ruined, and downtown would dwindle, and...
And there's gonna be 100 accidents.
And it has worked, just as Caltrans told us it would.
People have been predicting the demise of Main Street for probably since 1854, and there it is out there, all in its glory and doing very well, so...
Even when the whole town burned down, it's still in the glory.
Yeah, the town has burned down, and it's still out there, Main Street is still cute as hell.
I'd like to ask Steph another Caltrans question, if you wouldn't mind, just very quickly. Caltrans has got Highway 50 all signed up, ready to go, and I thought they were gonna do a big paving job a couple of months ago. Is that still on? Do we know?
Yes, they are beginning the grind and overlay. I believe they're starting in about, actually, you know what, I'll have to get back to you on the exact date, but they have started putting out construction area signs, which is usually the precursor to a grind and overlay. Grind and overlay jobs can go pretty quickly.
Okay. It just, I know how fussy they are about temperature and everything, and I thought, boy, this is getting late for the Caltrans specs to, but I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah, 55 and rising, that's all they need.
I'm ready for the refresh block top, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for all of that. Let me get to the back of the agenda here. Okay. Upcoming items, tentatively scheduled for next regularly scheduled city council meeting, which will be on November 14th, 2017, include Hangtown Creek Stream Instrument Replacements and Calibration Project, Eldorado Disposal Contract Amendment, Government Financial Strategies, Johnson Controls, Inc., Measure J Report, Introduction and Oath of Office for New Police Officer. Well, that's very exciting. So anyway, we will adjourn to November 14th, 2017. Thank you all very much, have a great evening.
Thank you.